I'm Steve Bosque, the opinion editor of the Sun Sentinel. My deputy opinion editor Dan Sweeney is on. Editorial writer Randy Schultz is on with us, as is Scott Travis, our education reporter. Just want to say for the record parenthetically, Scott Travis will certainly participate and ask questions. He's not a member of the editorial board and he has no involvement whatsoever in the editorial board's decision. Just so you know.
And I may not even agree with it, so.
Correct.
May or may not agree with it, you never know.
Sure. I want to begin with Angelique Contreras because I don't believe we received a candidate questionnaire from you. But Ms. Contreras, give us sort of a, an opening one minute or so synopsis about why you're running and why voters should vote for you and not Erica Whitfield.
Well, good morning, everyone. My name is Angelique Contreras and I'm running for the Palm Beach County School Board in District Four. I am a first generation Cuban American. I am a mother of three and expecting a fourth child in October. You know, the reason why I believe I stepped up and ran for this seat was not because of politics or anything else. It was because my child, my oldest, was in a failing school system and I felt unrepresented and unheard within the system. In 2021, our school district crafted an equity statement which Ms. Erica Whitfield agreed with, that there was in fact wide advantage within our school district. And being a Hispanic American, I do not believe that I am oppressed and I do not believe that we should tell children of minority descent that they are oppressed because of their white counterparts or the system. So that is one of the reasons why I stepped up to run for this seat was to represent the minority voices, but also all children in Palm Beach County, the businesses and our police officers, our teachers, our staff, our bus drivers. That is the reason why I believe I'm the best for District Four seat and we need new representation within District Four.
Okay. Ms. Contreras, is there anything in the, the school district's equity statement that you do agree with?
I do not, I do not agree with equity. I believe in the right of equality to all, but I do not agree with equity. As you all know, equity was a thing that was pushed in many countries of South America, Cuba being one of them and my homeland where my family lost everything too, where they wanted to ensure that everyone had equitable outcomes and look at where my beautiful country is today.
Okay. Let me ask Erica Whitfield for an opening statement and Ms. Whitfield, please include in your statement and your opening comments, why the equity statement was something you support.
Sure. First of all, thank you all so much for having me here today. It's my pleasure to be here. Actually grew up in Broward, so Sun Sentinel is part of my formative years, reading that newspaper. So a pleasure to be able to be here for the editorial board's impressions of this campaign. I have been on the school board for eight years. I love this job. I work really, really hard at it. I've taken the time that I've been in this school system to actually do the work that I did beforehand, before I got on the school district. So I worked for the school district and I worked on specifically trying to make sure that every child has a great opportunity for education. I do things like working on homeless and hungry, hunger programs. That's been something that's been my passion for a long time. I've actually worked on creating CPR in schools. I've worked really hard to make sure that every child has an opportunity for dual language programs so that we can have children learning how to speak Spanish within our school system and we're actually added Creole. We've added a few other language in this, in this time. So there's a lot of work that I've been doing around that. As far as the equity statement, you know, looking back at it, I can see why people got really upset about it. And it's been something that, you know, if I could go back in time, I would, I would just not do it because the intent behind it was not what people in the community took it as. So I did support it and I still support it. I support it specifically because the, the intention behind it means that we are going to take every child when they come into the school system and make sure that no matter where they come from, what their background is, what their diet looked like the night before, what their weekend looked like. If they come in hungry, they come in and haven't had a safe place to sleep in. They come in with disabilities, they come in with needing extra services. We're going to provide that opportunity to them. One of the things that I think has been frustrating for me is this idea of equal outcomes. That's not something that we've ever said in this. It's not something that I believe in. I think everyone has to have equal opportunities and equity to me, that's what that means. And so we've been working really hard as a school system to make sure that every child within the system is getting an opportunity to be successful, no matter what their background is. So that's what it means.
And just a quick follow-up if I may, Erica, if it's, if it's, if it means, if it means equal opportunity, not equal outcomes for every child and you still support it, why, why did you say a minute ago that you would not do it if you had it to do over again?
Because my goal has never been to bring politics into the school board and, and it was not something that I realized was going to turn into a political fight. So when it comes to me and my work on the school board, my goal has always been to keep the school district stable, transparent and have everybody feel included. And so what Ms. Contreras is talking about, the families pushing back, feeling like we don't represent them, that's not something that I would ever have wanted to do within the school system. So I believe that the equity statement in my mind was to create, you know, kind of a leading goals for our schools that everybody would get a great opportunity, no matter who they are, where they come from, or what's impacting their life. But my goal was never to upset parents. I try really hard to represent all parents in the school system. And unfortunately, Ms. Contreras says she has a bad experience in her school system. I wish she would have called me as her district representative because I have been here for eight years and I have returned the phone calls of a bunch of people who don't agree with me because I still believe that they deserve a great education system and they deserve to have schools that, that make them feel comfortable and happy and represent them. So knowing now what I see with this equity statement, I would have just said, you know, it's not something that the school district of Palm Beach County needs to get involved in.
Okay. Let me, uh, I'm going to pause here. I've got other questions, but I want to open the floor to my colleagues Randy, Dan and Scott Travis. So jump in, any of you.
First, Ms. Contreras, how's your husband doing?
Thank you for asking. You know, we're taking it day by day. Many of you may not know, my husband was in a motorcycle accident last Monday just leaving our complex to go to work. It was the scariest phone call I think I've ever faced in my life. And so, you know, he's got burn marks on his back. He has a fractured clavicle and he doesn't have any memory of the day, the accident or the hospital stay.
What's the prognosis? Hopeful, I hope.
Yeah, so right now, just really a lot of rest, ensuring that he takes his vitamins to, you know, allow his clavicle to, to heal. And then we have a follow-up next week with the doctor.
Okay, all right. All, all best to him and to all of you, of course.
Thank you.
You, you say on your campaign website that you, "Politics has gotten into the local schools," words to that effect and in a disapproving way. Your campaign contributions include $7,000, if I'm not mistaken, from the county Republican Party. That would seem to be, to be putting politics into the local schools, would it not? Is that a contradiction?
Well, and I would say this too, if you take a look at Erica Whitfield's endorsements, she's endorsed by every local Democrat in Palm Beach County. If you take a look at her finances as well, there is political parties that are playing part in this election.
Could we deal, could we, could we, could we, could we deal with yours first, please ma'am? And then we'll get to hers. Because I don't believe Ms. Whitfield has.
Yes, I was responding.
I don't believe Ms. Whitfield has money directly from the Democratic Party, is my point.
Okay. So as I was stating, the Republican Party, as well as our governor of our state, believes that it is important for all representation of all students within our district. And unfortunately, the current representation is biased on our board and has not represented all constituents within Palm Beach County. And that's why they're getting involved and ensuring that we have representation that's not just going to be politically motivated, but representation that's going to be there to support the community, all of the community, be transparent to all of the community. And that is what I want to provide for District Four, but for the entire county of Palm Beach County.
All right. Um, what you said that they have gotten involved and they, Democrats? Who, who has gotten involved in a way that you think the Republicans are responding to?
Well, if you, like I had stated earlier, if you take a look at a host committee that was participating in Erica's campaign kickoff, it was every elected Democrat in Palm Beach County. There was not one Republican elected official that was a part of that host committee. So there is politics that are being played currently within our school district.
Okay. Speaking of politics, this seems like an odd question to ask in a school board race, but you were at the January 6 rally in Washington in 2021. Do you believe that the 2020 election was decided fairly?
That's a great question. And yes, I did participate in the January 6 rally. I did go there because as a Cuban American, I knew what was at stake in America. Obviously, we're seeing inflation. Obviously, we're seeing a 20% hike in rent. I rent a townhome here in Palm Beach County in Lake Worth and my rent went up by $1,000 this last year. You know, my concern was that average Americans like myself were not going to be able to provide for my family. And I do believe that there was fraud in key states that ensured for the current administration to take the office. And that is the reason why I participated in that rally on January 6.
Okay, well, two, two things. Inflation of the kind you speak of was not an issue on, in January 2021. And just so we're clear, are you saying that you think the election was stolen for Joe Biden?
I'm not sure, Randy, what you think that that has to do with our current school district that is failing our students. I think that should be our priority of discussion that we have today, not January 6. But as I stated, as an individual who saw oppression, real oppression in Cuba and understood that from my family growing up, I understood that the current administration was going to lead to the demise of our nation. And that is the reason why I went on January 6 to Washington DC because we as Americans, all Americans, have a constitutional right, Randy, to peacefully assemble, to voice our opinions.
I understand that, ma'am. I under, I understand all that. I, I understand all that, but the question, the reason I'm asking is because there is no evidence to support the notion that the 2020 election was stolen. And you are running for public office. And if you don't have credibility on a question as big as that, then why should the voters think you have credibility on any other question about the school district?
I understand your concern, appreciate your question. I do believe that it is our civic duty to get involved in elections and it's an American dream of mine to be able to participate in civics in our nation. That's why I stepped up for this race. That's why I stepped up for the community so that we can have a voice that has a diverse opinion on our board. It is perfectly fine for average American to have a diverse opinion than you, Randy, and everyone on this call today. That is what makes, makes America so great.
Okey doke. I yield my time.
Well, let me, thanks Randy. Let me just follow up briefly with Erica Whitfield. I took, I took note of the following comment by Ms. Contreras, quote, "I do believe there was fraud in key states," unquote. Ms. Whitfield, do you agree with that statement?
No, categorically, no. I do not. I believe in our election system. I believe that we've had many conversations about this throughout time. And like Ms. Contreras said, I don't believe it's the purview of the school board to make these decisions. But as a, as a person, part of the electorate, a person who, you know, votes in our community, I feel like, you know, if there was question in the beginning, it's all been cleared up. There's been no, no evidence to state that. So, you know, I think, and I, you know, I believe that, you know, we came close to a disaster, but it didn't happen.
Okay. Dan Sweeney, Scott Travis, I invite your questions if you want to.
Okay, I can start. I guess I would like to hear, and I think Ms. Whitfield, you probably answered this because of the questionnaire, but I'd like to hear both of you. One of the things that clearly has become one of the most contentious issues is the parental rights in education bill, the one, or the law that says that you can't teach about sexual orientation, gender ring and gender identity in K through three. I wanted to find out if you all agree with this law and why or why not? So we can start with Ms. Whitfield.
Thank you so much. Well, first of all, let me start with the name parental rights. I am a parent in the school system. I have been a parent since I started on this board. My daughter was six and in kindergarten when I ran and now is going to high school next year. So I've been really in it and my next daughter, who I've had while I've been on the board, will also be attending our public school system. I believe parents have a right to be a part of their school system and have a right to make decisions. We have always had rights for people to opt out of anything that they don't feel is right for their family within our school system and I completely support that. I think that, you know, children should have the ability to, or parents should have the ability to know what their children are being taught and have a decision on that. So that to me has never been a question, not in Palm Beach County schools at all, ever. When we talk about the K to three sexual education, that's something that we've never done. In Palm Beach County, it's not in our curriculum to teach that K to three. Now, with the whole book question, we've actually gone back and looked at some of the books that have been out there and we've made sure to make sure that we are not, you know, going against this law. We do respect the laws of state of Florida. I believe in my position, it's my duty to uphold the laws. So we went back and we've gone and looked really heavily and we found a couple of books that do talk about like transgender that were decided by the book publisher that could be in a second grade level. Those books have been pulled just really out of an abundance of caution, making sure that we're not going against this, this law. But with sexual education, with talking about gender orientation, with all those things, they really are not mentioned until sixth grade. There is a brief mention of the existence of sex in fourth grade and it's because of an HIV and AIDS curriculum that we have to do per the state. But everything before that, the frustrating thing for me is I, I really wish people understood, you know, I couldn't ask a kindergarten teacher to teach about sex within a school system. No, no kindergarten teacher would do that. They just wouldn't. It wouldn't, it wouldn't come up. It wouldn't happen. We have good people that work for us and, and they, they have their own moral compass too. So it's not happening. It hasn't happened. We're not going to do it. I felt like the, the law was redundant and it didn't need to be there. If parents feel more comfortable with it being in there, that we're going to double check and triple check and make sure. It's a huge school system, so we do have to go through quite a bit of curriculum to make sure to follow these laws. So it is taking some time. But by and large, I, I say to everyone, I believe you would be proud of the education that your children are receiving within the school system. It's actually very, very good and my daughter goes there and I ask her questions constantly about what's going on in her school day and hear that day-to-day information. And, and this is just not a concern.
Okay, well, Ms. Whitfield, what about, because sometimes I, I hear a lot of times the conflating of sex with sexual orientation. So if you have somebody that's talking about, you have a story, different types of families, you know, there are some families, two moms, some, you know, have, you know, single moms, et cetera. Is that also considered, you know, sexual orientation?
No, absolutely not. The family structure is, is not even excluded with this law right now. So as the law currently states, family structure is still supported within that and we are going to continue to have conversations about that. That is not something that we are pulling out because of this law. It's actually not even written into the law. So some of those things have been confused within these conversations, but I fully support the LGBT community. We are going to talk about everyone's families, what they look like, how they, how they are structured. And if you have two moms, then you're doubly lucky.
All right, Ms. Contreras, same question.
Yeah, so for that question, I was a huge advocate for parental rights in education, for that bill to be passed and signed into law in the state of Florida. Many of you know that. I do appreciate Erica stating clarifications within that law because it has been construed and there has been misinformation that's been spread from all sides. And I agree that we do have to remove any of those books and explicit content from our schools that our children had access to. One of those school, one of those books that were mentioned by Erica, it was called "It Feels Good To Be Yourself." Now, if a family wants to purchase that book for their child or wants to go to the, the public library and check out that book for their family, that is their right to do that. But to have that book within 113 schools in our district that talks about pronouns and talks about, you know, sexuality to our children in K through third grade, I do not agree with that being within our schools. I believe those conversations belong with the households, with the parents. It's not something that should be taught in our schools to our students in, in elementary.
And if I could just say one thing, Scott, the, the school system maintains a list of books on their website for each of the schools. You can actually go and see what's available in the media center at all times. Our staff even uses that when they're working on this law. So you can actually pull that up and you can look. And we've always had a procedure in place if there's a concern for a parent, that they can always write that in. So it's, it's not like a new process. I would say it's being more heavily used now than it has been in the past, but parents have always had the right to see what is available within their media centers.
Ms. Whitfield, are you familiar with that particular book that Ms. Contreras mentioned? And?
I am not. No, I don't know that one. I've read Call Me Max, I've heard about I Am Jazz, Gender Queer was another one that we pulled. I've heard a little bit about it, actually haven't seen it, but no, I am not aware of that book.
Ms. Contreras, what about what, what Ms. Whitfield said, said earlier about how discussions of family groups and family structures are perfectly okay under this law and that discussions of family groups and family structures, including ones made up of, you know, different sexual orientations are and will continue to be discussed at, at lower grade levels? Do you agree that that's not covered by this law? And do you agree that those sort of things should be discussed in grades K through three?
I believe if a teacher has a significant other that is a woman or a man and they want to put up a family photo in their classroom, they have every right to do that. This law does not stop them from doing that. And so I do agree with Erica Whitfield, but when it comes to the discussion of pronouns and the way that you'd like to identify, those are things that should not be discussed with our children before they even get the concepts of writing, of reading, of math, those basic concepts that are necessary for children to succeed in this world. Those are the things we should be focusing on in elementary.
Why are pronouns a problem? If, if you just have a little boy and say, you know, do you ident, are you, you know, is a boy? Is, are you a he, are you a she? And then the boy answers, "I'm a he." Is that, is that traumatizing the child in some way? Or I, I'm just not sure what the issue is there.
I'm not sure. I'm not sure, Scott, if you're trying to put words in my mouth, I did not say that. But that is not a basic concept that children are taught in elementary school.
That you're, they're taught that they don't have to be the pronouns. So they're, they're taught, like little boys are taught that you, at that age, that you don't have to be a he, you can be a she, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, that is not a discussion for the teacher and the student. That's a discussion that a child has in private with their parents.
And that's happening, is what you're saying, in schools?
Absolutely, it has happened and you all have heard two moms already stated to you both that at the school, the summer camp that a mom sent her child to, which just finished first grade, he was asked what his pronouns were and what he'd like to identify as. That is not appropriate and that should not be something that administration, teachers or staff should be discussing with minors.
But that didn't happen in a classroom, it happened at a camp.
It has happened in classrooms too.
How do you know that, ma'am? Do you have, can you, can you prove that?
Randy, I appreciate the question. It has happened. Parents have told me while we have gone door knocking and speaking to the community. So those things are happening and those things are being pushed. Those things are being pushed currently with teacher trainings, with things within our school district and.
Whoa, excuse me, you're saying teachers, teachers are being trained to do this?
Absolutely. Diversity, equity and inclusion. That is an important portion of teacher training and school district's mission as well.
Yeah, but that's, you said they're being trained to talk about pronouns and gender, right?
Absolutely. We have a documentation that states that.
And what is that documentation, ma'am?
It's teacher trainings that have come out of our school district in Palm Beach County.
Ms. Whitfield, you want to, you want to respond to that?
Sure. Yeah, there, there was a training, I think the one that she's talking about from a few years back, it's no longer in place. It was a training that was written K to 12 on the actual document, but it really wasn't for younger children. So when this discussion came up, before this law even went into place, this was pulled out and reexamined. It's still being examined. It was, it was, again, I say, many years ago that this went through. You know, they've, they've been reassessing because of the law, a lot of these things happening. I would say that it is not currently happening. And it, the law just went into effect on July 1st. So we as a school district are in compliance with that law and we intend to be in full compliance with the law. But as far as training people to have discussions about what pronouns, that would even, even if that was part of that training, it was for the older grades to be able to have that, that conversation about understanding people. I think a lot of it's really just about understanding the people that we live around. I actually do a lot of work with our transgender community. Very proud of that work, very proud of the support that they have given me in this process and of the, you know, their representation within our school system. And it's just, just understanding the, the people that we're talking about. This really is something that's a middle school and on conversation. Elementary schools weren't really having this conversation. Like Ms. Contreras said, it's a little early for them. They don't really know what's going on. You have an occasionally have a student who changes their gender earlier than that and that's obviously a conversation with the family and the school. But mostly it's, you know, middle school and on. And the training that she's speaking about is no longer in our system.
Ms. Contreras, what's the, what's the biggest high school in District Four?
I'm sorry, I, the phone keeps breaking out, so I can't hear when Erica responded or your question.
My, my question is, teach us a little bit about District Four. What's the biggest high school in District Four?
That's a great question. I currently do not know what our biggest high school is in District Four and I'll be humble and transparent and say that because I think that is important. I do know that I have to do some brushing up and educating more than anybody else would. And that's what happens when you're a new candidate and you're just getting involved in things locally. So that's a great question, Steve, and I currently do not know that answer.
Ms. Whitfield, what's the biggest high school in District Four?
St. Lucius is the biggest. We have four in District Four, actually just picked up another one. So I started, we have Dreyfus, St. Lucius and Boynton Beach that are officially in, in my district. But this past year with redistricting, I actually picked up Lake Worth High, which is pretty great because it's my, my local school that's right down the street from me. But all of them are pretty underrepresented. Dreyfus is full capacity, but only at about 1,400 students because it's not a very large campus. Boynton and Lake Worth are a little under, under capacity and St. Lucius is probably the biggest that we have with a few thousand students there.
Okay. I wanted, I wanted to go back, go back a bit and ask, ask a follow-up question to Ms. Contreras about something Erica Whitfield said in, in the discussion about, about the parental rights in education issue and grades K through three and what students are, are taught or not taught. Ms. Whitfield made a comment to the effect of that, you know, teachers have their own moral compass and that children are getting a very good education in Palm Beach County. I, she didn't say this, but I took that to mean that, you know, teachers are parents too. Teachers have little kids. Teachers have little kids. You've got teachers from all walks of life in Palm Beach County. So my question is, Ms. Contreras is, do you share Ms. Whitfield's faith in that teach, classroom teachers have their own moral compass and they know what to say and not say to little kids? Your mic is muted, I think, Ms. Contreras, so. Go ahead.
I believe that we need to support our teachers. And what's interesting is that we are talking about so many political hot topics in the nation, yet we still haven't got down to the bottom line of issues that we're facing within our own district. I think that's important, that we have to allow the outside noise to be subsided and focus on the retention of our teachers, the support of our teachers, the support of our officers within our school district, the support of our bus drivers, and the individuals within our community. Those are the things that I believe Erica, both, both of I, both of us should be focused on within our campaigns, focused on as an elected official within our community, things that we have local control of. Yes, I agree that our teachers have a moral compass and they are doing the best with what they have available to them. And they should be supported and they must be supported.
Okay, in that vein, Ms. Contreras, do you support and will you vote for the property tax referendum that's on the ballot in November in Palm Beach?
Personally, I will vote for the referendum because I do believe that we need to ensure our teachers have a salary. But I do not agree as a fiscally responsible individual that with a $4.1 billion budget, that we should continue to ask the taxpayers to give Palm Beach County School District money when we are not using our tax dollars properly within our school district. I believe that the referendum is important to ensure those salaries are paid and continued for the next four years, if I'm not mistaken. And we need to look at our $4.1 billion budget and possibly audit things that we are not spending responsibly on.
Yeah, I'm going to open the floor to my colleagues for more follow-up questions.
Steve, can I respond to that a little bit?
Yes, you can. Yes, you may. You should tell us, Ms. Whitfield, in your answer about your position on the referendum as well.
Sure. So I actually love the referendum. I advocated very heavily for it the first time. Actually, both referendums that we currently have, I've been on the board since both of them took effect, except for one piece of this current referendum that we're talking about in November. There was a one that predated me that actually worked towards the arts, PE, music, and choice program teachers. It was a .25 referendum. We actually moved it up to the full one mil referendum. This actually is something that came up after Stoneman Douglas. And the reason why it is so important is because we really wanted to work on safety and security for our students. One of my huge passion areas when I came into the school district was around mental health. It's something I've worked really hard on since we've gotten in. And so this is, I always say, the one good thing that came out of Stoneman Douglas and the tragedy there was that we are now focused on the mental health of our students better than we ever have been. And we use the funds from this referendum to actually put a behavioral health professional in every school. We make sure we have a police officer on every campus, which is huge. We've created single point entry with the, the one cent tax that we had on sales tax. That actually worked to creating, you know, making sure we had single point entry and getting video cameras. So all of these things are really, I think, being really done well. One of the other things the referendum does that Ms. Contreras mentioned is teacher pay. And so in the state of Florida, we're actually 44th in the country when it comes to how much money we get from, the, how much we are actually paying, paying for each student to get educated. So it's a little over $7,000 a student. So we're pretty low on that list. But with Palm Beach County giving us extra funding for this current referendum and with the half cent sales tax that we have gotten for 10 years, we'll have for 10 years, those funds actually kick us up into a higher level for how much we're actually paying for our students to be educated here and how much we're able to pay for our facilities to be improved and fixed. So with that, it actually makes Palm Beach County really competitive within the state, within the country. We have an amazing education system. We're A-rated. We're actually doing better than all the urbans. We just got all our scores back. So we've been getting scored, I think, I believe, since I've been sitting here, I saw pop up a message from the superintendent that science scores may have just come in. So all the scores are coming in as, you know, in the, over the last few weeks. And we're seeing how well we're doing compared to all of the rest of the state of Florida. So I believe these funds are really crucial. And actually, I do agree with Ms. Contreras. This is what we should be focused on as school board members, what we can actually impact. And what I want to say about what I've done personally during the time that I've been on the school board, we've given at least a 3% raise to our teachers every single year. And not just our teachers, but all our staff, because I was a staff member, I was part of the non-bargaining unit. So I always feel like they're like the underrepresented group in the school district. And so we've got all the bargaining groups that come and fight us, but non-bargaining just gets whatever we give to everyone else. So those raises, 3% every year is, is pretty much unheard of. And in the state of Florida right now, we gave the best raise to teachers in the entire state. There are people that hate us all over the state because we gave 3.5%. And the reason why we did it is because it is so unbelievably difficult to live in Palm Beach County. And rates of rents have gone up, gas prices have gone up. It's very hard for our teachers. And in order to stay competitive and to have, keep our teachers, we had to do that. So we did it for our bus drivers. We're actually raising to $15 an hour, something I worked on, really hard on. So I could talk forever. I know it's, it's too much. But I just want to say, these are huge priorities for me, very passionate about it, and it's something that I, I've definitely worked on.
All right. Thank you very much. Scott, Dan, Randy?
Uh, yes, hi. Well, I guess I, Ms. Contreras, how do you feel about the academics in Palm Beach County? How strong do you think they are? And how do you feel about that they, it was handled during the COVID period too?
Yeah, I, I believe that we have to ensure academic excellence in our district. And, you know, many of the other parents that I've spoken to, and I go back to the equity statement and I appreciate now Erica's position on it, that we, we went away from providing a world-class education for our students regardless of their zip code in Palm Beach County. I think that's important. We have a diverse community in Palm Beach County. And the diversity is growing within the Hispanic community. We need to support all of our students within Palm Beach County. We need to have more trade programs available for our high school students that are not going to, you know, go to college. We need to work within our communities to ensure that, you know, we are providing that excellent education for our students and representing everyone in Palm Beach County. And I do appreciate, you know, obviously, the candor and, and, you know, the, the conversations that we've had here on this call because it allows the individuals in District Four to see that they have two great candidates that are running to represent them, to be their voice within District Four. I think that's what everybody deserves and what everybody is looking for. They're looking for leadership. They're looking for representation that is not just going to do what they believe is best, but work within their community to do what's best for them.
Okay, and Governor DeSantis had, is endorsing candidates. Do you, have you, did you fill out that questionnaire for him? And have you heard yet whether he gave you the endorsement?
Governor DeSantis has submitted surveys to school board candidates to fill out. It is not something that every candidate has to do. It's not mandatory. But it was something that I did fill out and agreed to the pledge. And I have already done my interview with Team DeSantis. And I'm looking forward to the endorsement of our governor because I believe that he has done a great job within our state to ensure pay raises for our teachers, to ensure funding is going to our schools. I think that's really important, that we have representation on our board that can work with our legislator, work with the governor in our state and not work against him to ensure that we are giving the best to our students, our staff, our parents, and our community in Palm Beach County.
Okay, and I, I don't know exactly, I haven't checked to see what the exact demographics or the political affiliations in the district are. But it, it feels like just with Lake Worth and West Palm Beach, that it would tend to be a rather liberal district. And correct me if I'm wrong on that. I wonder how you, as a, you know, conservative that may not see eye to eye with a lot of your constituents, how do you sort of balance that?
Well, and I feel that same way, and I felt that same way. And the reason why I ran with Erica Whitfield, I felt unrepresented, you know, underrepresented as a conservative in Palm Beach County, that there was bias on our board and that there isn't diversity on our board. I want to ensure that we have robust conversations on our board and that we work with our communities regardless of their political affiliation. I think in our nation, we've gone so far to the left and so far to the right, the right, we can't find a middle ground anymore. And unfortunately, individuals like the Palm Beach Post and Sun Sentinel and other very biased media has painted me out to be this horrible person when, look, I'm just an average American mom who wants the best for my children. My, my husband is from El Salvador. Like I said, I'm first generation Cuban American. I'm, I'm a proud Latina. And I want what's best for my children and for everyone's children. And we're going to have diverse opinions. We're going to have conversations that are uncomfortable, but they're important. Because again, like I stated earlier, that is what makes our nation great, is the melting pot of opinions, the melting pot of ethnicities and diversity in our communities. That is what makes America what it is. And it's important that we have those differing opinions.
Okay, thank you. And can you tell me, are you pro-police? And could you please explain the Gestapo comment?
I am. I have always supported our police officers. I grew up in Port St. Lucie and I remember having the deer program within our schools and building a relationship with my sheriffs and police officers. I grew up next to Ken Mascara and had a very strong relationship with him. And unfortunately, what happened to me has happened to other people within our nation. It was a politically motivated intimidation tactic that happened. And when I posted that video, I did feel as if I was experiencing things that my family did in Cuba. You have to understand, many of my family members that rose up against the political regime of communism, of Fidel Castro in Cuba, were murdered. They became political prisoners because they had a differing opinion than what the communist ideology was. And that's what I felt like that night. I felt that I was a political target and through further research, I was. And unfortunately, our officers did something that maybe they should not have done, which is protect and serve our community and do what is best for our community instead of becoming a political entity that was doing, you know, the work of our local officials.
Was it true that you were wanting, where you were discussing putting like, I don't know if it's vandalizing or littering a county commissioner's lawn?
That is, that is not true or accurate. We were discussing the county commissioners wanting to move the maskless into the basement of the commissioner's garage in order to participate in those meetings, just as the school district moved us into a pod. And we weren't able to face our elected officials. These are elected officials that are with taxpayer salaries. And I was frustrated. I thought that it was important for the community to know that it was our responsibility to hold our elected officials responsible and accountable. And an individual had made a remark that jokingly remarked that he put hundreds of bags of garbage on their lawn. And I stated, just a couple of words, thousands of masks. And the reason why I stated that jokingly was because our county spent $11 million of our CARESACs fund to send us masks. And at that time, that was the joke that was made, but there was no intentions to do that. And I have never heard in my lifetime of officers being dispatched to a parent's house at 10:30 at night when they're putting their children to bed to ask them if they were going to commit a crime, if they were going to trespass. That is unheard of, Scott.
Okay. All right. And I just want to, Ms. Whitfield, what's your reaction to that? Do you feel that those are issues that would have any bearing on her being a school board member?
Well, I mean, we have our own police force and I am a big fan of them. Can you hear me? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay, so I, I really love our police force. You know, when we had the Marjorie Stoneman Douglas incident tragedy, I, you know, it really kind of brought into focus what it, what it means for our police to go and serve our schools every day. And so I've been a huge supporter of them. I actually have worked with them before I even got on the board. I, I ran community gardens for the whole school district. And we actually had volunteers from the sheriff's department that would come and help us. And so I actually really adore them and I think they do great work. I talk to them all the time. I think knowing that, that I support them and that, you know, we will do anything to keep them safe makes their, hopefully, makes them realize the, the work that we're doing. We're actually, we just gave them one of the biggest raises as well. And now we're competitive with Palm Beach Sheriff's Office. So I think we're doing a lot of really good things at the school district around our, our police. And I would hate for them to, you know, think that their representative on the school board didn't think that the work that they were doing was valuable or needed.
Okay. We really appreciate your time and we're respectful of it. And we've been here almost an hour, so.
Well, is it okay if I respond to that?
By, by all means, sure.
Yeah, so I, I do appreciate Erica's candor in speaking about the pay raise within our district. And I do believe that we have to ensure, because of Stoneman Douglas, that we have enough officers in our schools, that they have adequate equipment and that they're, that they're heard, that they felt that they're heard. And what I've heard from the officers that I've spoken to, they don't feel represented. They feel that they would be better served underneath the sheriff's office and allowing the merger to happen within our district. And unfortunately, there is board members that currently do not believe that we should do the merger. And I do believe that does not ensure our children's safety. It doesn't ensure that we have an officer at each school, that they have the training necessary to ensure our, our children are safe in our schools. So those are discussions that we need to have and be transparent about. Our officers currently do not feel represented. They do not currently feel like they are best represented currently and that they do want to have the merger with the Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office.
Well, Ms. Contreras, what, isn't that the same law enforcement officer that, you know, you said inappropriately harassed you during that day? And do you think that that would indicate any bias, that there could be a bias in the way that they, they treat kids at school?
Absolutely not. I believe in mentorship. I believe that our officers are vital individuals in our schools to ensure that we have school safety, relationships and rapport with our students. Those are things that I believe are important. And our Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office will provide that for our students in Palm Beach County. It will ensure that our officers have working equipment so that if there is a tragedy that happens, they have a working radio in order to respond quickly. Those are things that we need to focus on. Those are things that should be our priority within our district.
Okay. Why don't we call it a day there, folks? I appreciate your time very much. Thanks for the time. The Sunset will appreciate your willingness to answer these questions. Ms. Contreras, we would still really appreciate getting a questionnaire from you, but that, that's your call, so.
Thank you all very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Have a great day.